Good evening. I'd like to call to order our work session for this evening that will be happening prior to our regular board meeting. For the record, I will call a roll call vote of the board members. Ms. Butler, Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith is not here. Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
And she's obviously calling us from the heavens remotely and myself. We have all but one board member present. The purpose of tonight's work study session is to work our way through the proposed 2025 legislative agenda. I'm going looking for Ms. Armour, and I know she is ready because she's worked hard on this. Lauren, if you would come to the podium and remind all of us your title. I described her as legislative advocate extraordinary early today, and she said it really wasn't her title, but I think it's appropriate. No. Doesn't sound.
Could have pressed the one button there, but.
There we go.
Nevertheless.
Welcome.
Thank you, President Bitter Smith. My name is Lauren Armour. I am the Government Relations Director for Maricopa Community College District. Thank you to the governing board for giving me the opportunity to come and present to you tonight. Anyone who knows me knows I love my job, and I love my job because I get to do good work worth doing. But my work and my job are only as good as the authority and support that I get from the board I do it on behalf of. So I am happy each year, and tonight in particular, to have the opportunity to have a discussion with you about the scope of my work, our legislative agenda, what objectives we have when I bring our messages to places like the state capitol and beyond. With that in mind, I'll start presenting our 2025 legislative agenda that I worked on in partnership with my partner in crime, Abby James, the analyst who works with me. To the next slide. So just a few successes from our 2024 agenda. The one I'm most proud of is the establishment of the Community College Promise in statute. It was a hard-fought battle, and I have high hopes for where that program is going in the near future. We faced a significant and frankly, a surprising reduction in cuts by the initially proposed state budget last year, and we had all of six days to turn things around. I'm very proud of the progress that we made in turning around what was initially proposed to fight another day on some of our issues. We received maintenance of funding for our adult education program, and we got some programmatic changes that were needed passed into statute. We secured federal funding for an extension of our nursing pilot, and of course, our nursing programs are incredibly important right now. And we completed a successful application for federal community project funding dollars to support our semiconductor infrastructure, another very high-impact industry right now. So a little background on our internal process with respect to the legislative agenda and how that's developed. We started, because the session went so long, we started in August this year convening an internal task force, and really, at that task force, to that task force, we brought the culmination of a couple of months of work on my and Abby's part of what we thought that an agenda should look like this year. We had two review and feedback meetings with that internal shared governance task force, got their feedback, made some really meaningful, important changes, and from there distributed to the board's Public Affairs Committee for feedback, got some additional changes made through that process. And tonight, we are at a boardwork session to discuss the outcome of all of that process. In November, you'll have the opportunity to vote on a final product based on our discussion tonight. And starting from that point, I will advocate for the board's adopted agenda anywhere and everywhere. So the goals of having an agenda, why does this, why do we go through all this trouble? These are our general positions and guidance on legislation in particular, but anything policy-facing, anything facing a government entity, to allow a quick staff response. As I mentioned earlier, this is sort of my authority to act without having to come back to you on each individual little thing. We have bi-weekly meetings throughout the year with the board's Public Affairs Committee, but we have ongoing communication with all of our board members to keep you informed throughout the legislative session. We send out a weekly government relations update. We provide chancellor, through the chancellor, government relations reports at each board meeting. We have worked really hard over the last year to improve our college president engagement and just our college engagement in general, making sure everyone feels heard and included in the process. And our ultimate goal here is just to continue the positive state and federal momentum that we've enjoyed. So we have three guiding principles in this document, and under each of those sort of broader headings, we have some subcategories. Our first principle, and I would say the most fundamental, is preserving and strengthening our local governing authority. The first item under that heading is enabling the district to diversify revenue sources and keep tuition and fees affordable. He focuses under this heading are reinstating our maintenance and operation funding from the state general fund, which we have not received in a decade now, unfortunately, supporting efforts to modernize the expenditure limitation formula. I hope we'll get to take that out of the presentation soon, but I won't count my chickens. And of course, we'll always be working on that as a broader goal, so maybe we'll keep it in. Pushing back against any constraint to our local authority is probably the most fundamental aspect of any of my work. Affirming Maricopa's ability to offer a wide variety of degrees, certificates, and credentials. A key focus here in recent years has been creating and then preserving our baccalaureate degree authority and reducing barriers to growing those programs, and really, any of our programs, making sure we are calling balls and strikes on what our programming should look like. Minimize administrative barriers in legal compliance, rules, and regulations. Some might call this a more boring portion of the job, but it's really, really important and lets a lot of meaningful work get done. Some key focuses here are ensuring fund requirements comply with programmatic offerings and modernizing federal data collection processes. Again, sounds in the weeds, but ends up being really high-impact at the end of the day. Supporting policies that protect the rights of students, faculty, and staff academically and professionally. One key focus in recent years has been supporting policies that safeguard student engagement on campus. The second broadline principle that we operate under is creating and sustaining workforce development initiatives. A large portion of our work falls under this heading. So we seek to secure funding for programs responding to the highest need workforce areas in the county, state, and nation. He focuses under this heading includes supporting the expansion of and scholarship opportunities for teacher preparation, nursing, and other high-demand jobs. Preserve and expand investments in adult education programs, a critical focus of this upcoming session. Support and investment in short-term workforce-driven credential programs, the kind we are always asked by our community to get up and running. Second is providing short-term credential programs that enhance access to employment. Some key focuses here are promoting investment to develop and expand programs in high-demand occupational areas. You're seeing some themes here, but it is important, driving workforce reskilling and upskilling efforts. Maintaining the state STEM and workforce development formula funding, the biggest pool of state funding that we currently receive. This gives us the opportunity to do things like improving labs and maker spaces for classroom and community uses, and to generate new program slots in high-demand fields that fall under those umbrellas. To help launch, grow, and sustain small businesses through investments in small business development and entrepreneurial incubators. This previous session, and again, this session, will be seeking to support funding for our small business development centers with an emphasis on drawing down full federal matching dollars. We seek to support the development of data infrastructure to capture labor market outcomes. It's if we're going to stand up important workforce programming, we need to have accurate and as close to real time as possible information about what the market needs. We collaborate with public agencies to capture licensure and employment data for particular fields, nursing and teaching, again, a theme, and leveraging our partnerships with career development services like Pipeline AZ. And our third and final principle is improving outcomes for students with holistic supports. Under that heading, we seek to bolster opportunities for quality education at an affordable price, such as expanding Pell and Promise scholarships. The committee and I went back and forth on whether or not to call out any particular scholarship initiatives under this, because one's not more important than the other. We seek to support them all, but these are two we've done particular and meaningful work in in recent years, and I think it's worth mentioning them. Key focuses include ensuring support reaches beyond tuition to include fees and other necessary costs of higher education, supporting changes to Pell and other grants that enhance student access, specifically ending taxation of Pell, increasing a maximum, and expanding the programs that are included in Pell, and expanding student support to access scholarships. We seek to promote local, state, and federal policies and investments that enhance vital basic need services. That includes supporting efforts to improve student access to affordable housing, food, and basic need supports, technology, internet, transportation, textbooks, learning materials, and childcare, all things that are essential if they're going to engage meaningfully in a classroom. We seek to strengthen resources for students and groups who experience barriers to educational access. That includes strengthening resources to Hispanic-serving institutions and minority-serving institutions, and supporting FAFSA and other scholarship prerequisite completion efforts. We work to elevate early college pathways to promote college access awareness and preparedness. Key focuses include supporting early college co-enrollment and dual enrollment partnerships, and supporting the early college instructor pipeline. We work to improve transfer pathways to promote equitable access to bachelor's degrees. That includes supporting standardized methods of evaluating transfer credits, reducing administrative burden by improving or automating manual processes. And that concludes the, what is encompassed in my proposed legislative agenda for this year. I'm open to any questions at this time.
Lauren, thank you. And obviously, there's been a great deal of work capitalized into two pages of language, but it reflects a variety of issues and some battles we may face, or hopefully, will be able to deal with as we move through the next session. Are there questions from board members? Yeah. Ms. Davis, and then.
Go first.
Ms. Sullivan, and I suspect Dr. Thor may want to say something too. So Ms. Davis?
Um, I have a. I have a question on Slide 11, and it has to do with support expansion of and scholarship opportunities for teacher preparation, nursing, and other high-demand programs. Is that kind of talking about the Teachers Academy?
I certainly think the Teachers Academy is encompassed in that bullet point, and that's going to be a really, really important topic about that. I think it's a huge issue of equity right now that our bachelor's degrees are excluded from the Teachers Academy. We are the lowest-cost provider, I think I've said that 17 times just today, of bachelor's degrees, and to the tune of one quarter, the next less, least expensive option, and for the state dollars to go as far as they possibly can, we need to be included in the Teachers Academy, and I do think that's where that bullet fits.
So Lauren, my question is, is there a nursing academy?
There is no nursing academy. The Teachers Academy is the only of its kind. However, we have received state, federal combined support for nursing education efforts in recent years.
Okay. Thank you.
Sullivan?
I love your smile, Lauren. So let's just go. Okay. Thank you very much for doing this and for the hard work you, the team, everyone here does to ensure that we're cognizant of issues that are going to impact us, and also forwarding our interests that is going to support student success and other pieces. So just want to celebrate that you did that, but I do have a couple of questions. You know, looking through this, I appreciate the examples you gave under the primary topics. As we go into the public sector with our agenda, because we will, will you be representing these examples? Are we going to be, is this more for our understanding and appreciation of where we would take some concepts and ideas depending on what happens?
I think the examples are more retrospective than prospective. These are largely things that we have already dealt with in recent years that fit under each category. So I think they're apt illustrative examples to tell you what might be encompassed under a bullet point. We don't know exactly what's ahead of us, so I would hate for those examples to be construed as the full list, but with that in mind, they are, they do give some insight into sort of what could come and be included in those different categories.
And I think that distinction is really important for us, because having worked in advocacy for longer than I've ever been on this board, you know, things change on a dime, and you then issues surface, and you have to be nimble. So I appreciate the framework, and though I know there was some interest in having examples provided, so we have an understanding or a sense of what falls under those categories, I would expect that through government relations and working with our outside partners in advocacy, that we would be able to hone in on issues and move forward more quickly, regardless of what's on this paper outside of the principles. So you're reassuring me that that's.
I appreciate that. I think that that's necessary to do my job effectively, but I, that is joined with the hope that I am meeting your needs as a board of being updated and in the loop and getting the information that you need about what I'm working on. So it's a, it's an ongoing process.
May I?
Continue, please.
So we have some new folks in the audience who haven't seen us do this before. You work at what levels of government when you're representing us? Can you answer that?
Work at all levels of government when representing us. I'd love to delegate a bit more, frankly, but as of today, I do it all, and I'm happy to. There's just more work to be done, which is why my partner Abby is so important. She helps us get it done at all levels. So yeah, lots of, the bulk of our work happens at the state level, but we have robust local partnerships and conversations and amazing relationships with our federal delegation as well.
And for example, today, you met with the governor's office.
Yes. Yeah, we had the opportunity to sit down with staff at the governor's office, as we do fairly frequently, and well aware that we are a week before an election that will probably dramatically change everything that was said in the meeting. We tried to give a bit of a preview of what we might collaborate with them on and what we might bring to bear. We emphasized the assuming we have the opportunity to do so, having a real discussion about reinstating our maintenance and operation funding, something we haven't been able to do while we've been constrained by the expenditure limitation, because those funds were subject to the expenditure limitation, and therefore, we couldn't spend them even if we were given them. So it would have been a battle on principle that wasn't worth fighting. Now the principle and the money are both there. That's, that's a much better conversation to have, or at least hopefully, they will be in a week. And we emphasized our bachelor's degrees being included in the Teachers Academy, something we've been pushing for for a few years, and are hoping this is our year.
And so, working with others, and certainly recognizing that the board partners with you, I know there are a lot of other partners, there's leadership from faculty, there's leadership from students, on and on. Where do you believe that we have the greatest impact in our advocacy areas? And there's no right answer. I'm just curious.
I've long been a proponent that the more local you get in your advocacy, the higher your impact is going to get. And I think I've seen that true in this role particularly. We've had good success at all, all levels, though. I think we are having perhaps more impact than some of our peers. I mean, I think we're doing a really good job across the, across the board, but if I had to pick one, I'd pick our local partnerships any day. They're just, we get a lot done.
And the consistency with which we all need to talk to people is certainly one of the reasons we produce an agenda then, so that we're all in alignment with some of the.
Yes. I hope this agenda facilitates conversations, gets us all sort of on the same page initially, even if there are some twists and turns in the path we take through legislative session in particular.
Yeah, well, we'll see how that goes. Just again, want to thank you for that. This is hard work. It requires all of us, but it also requires all of us to be focused and responsible to the agenda and to not go rogue, just because we might have a personal interest. So thank you for taking the leadership on that.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I will just add too, that I appreciated the timeliness. Over time, if I've been on the board, we have now moved this process into a much more time-appropriate, even when sessions get out late. So I appreciate that work, and to the point that Ms. Sullivan was making for the board, and for those of us that, the district level that are certainly involved, this gives us a framework, so there are no surprises, because things move rapidly, and there's not time to call a special board meeting. So these are the issues, and these are the guidance for our team on the ground that the county or the legislature, whatever issue they're dealing with. That's the reason we spend time doing this. Some of the, of the examples that were added really are the suggestion of the Public Affairs Committee of the board to try to give us a sense so that Lauren was not thinking, okay, now exactly what does this mean? It gives her some guidance so she can make those snap decisions when she has to be there as our voice and with our contractors that assist us in that messaging. So that's the purpose for the document. It doesn't just go in a folder somewhere. It actually has a real purpose and reason for spending time talking about it. I want to see, Dr. Thor, do you have questions or comments?
Thank you, President Bitter Smith. I don't have questions, but do have some comments. I also want to thank Lauren, Abby, and the members of the team for the good work that you did for us during 2024, which I know was a difficult year, as well as to thank you for the planning that you've done for the 2025 legislative session. I really like this new format. I very much like the presentation of overall principles, and then followed by directives. And I thought it was really, really important that you did include some examples, even if they were retrospective, because I think the examples add, make the document more transparent, more understandable, and allows us to see how this translates into operations. And I also like the fact that the agenda this year includes federal priorities as well as those at the state level. So I know the board looks forward to working with you and the team in whatever way we are able to help move this agenda forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Again, other questions or comments from anybody else on the board? Well, with that, as you know, this will come back to the board at our November agenda for final approval. So if there are thoughts that come up between now and then, please let Lauren know, although there's been a great deal of time spent on this, and she's now moving into the action side, which will start Tuesday at midnight, maybe?
No.
Wednesday night, whatever.
Whatever we have now.
When you know we're dealing with. All right. Saying no other further issues for our work study session, I will adjourn it at 6 o'clock. We cannot start our regular board meeting until 6:30, so you have a half an hour to mix and mingle and get ready for the business session. Thank you, Lauren, very much. Meeting is adjourned. It is now that magic hour, magic half hour, I should say, at 6:30. So once again, good evening, and I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting for the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of October 29, 2024. And for the record, I will call a roll call the board members, starting with our student trustee, Ms. Jackson Long.
Present.
Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith is absent. Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
Wonderful. Thank you, and myself. And I want to let you know that Dr. Gonzalez is actually here with us. He's in the same cloud of heaven that Dr. Thor is. I guess calling remotely, he's in Washington DC working on district business. We're delighted to have our Provos with us if we, if she needs to step in, but I know Dr. Gonzalez intends to do the reporting. Dr. Gonzalez, you are still with us, correct?
I am, Mrs. Smith.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. See? He's there. Good. All right. With that, I would like to welcome the Glendale Community College Peer Success Team and their Dean of Student Life, Dr. Genesis Tool. And Dr. Tool, are you going to introduce your team? Because I think we have someone destined to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, correct?
Yes.
Uh, that may be you. That may be you, and I can help you. So.
Y'all want to all say it and help?
There we go. Wonderful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. If nothing else, you have proven that you are very nimble, and I've seen us nimble, so thank you for making that happen. So wonderful. So with that, then I will let you proceed with the team and their report.
Hello, everyone. President Bitter Smith, members of the governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, wherever you are, Dr. Hernandez, members of the Women's Venture Program, and all other distinguished guests. I'm Dr. Genesis Tool. I'm the Dean of Student Life at Glendale Community College, and one of the founding employees that started the Peer Success Coach Program. I have to give a shout out because the other founding member, where are you, Alyssa? It's Alyssa McKinney over there. So thank you for being here tonight. It's an honor to introduce this program, the Peer Success Coach Program. Appreciative to have this space to share with y'all all of the successes that the coaches are here to talk to y'all about tonight. It's truly their dedication that makes this a successful program. They are really dedicated to retention and seeing the students succeed at GCC. So we're very lucky to have the coaches that are with y'all tonight. So I'd like to introduce Warvis Gilmore Jr. and the rest of the team to come up and do our presentation.
Welcome.
There we go.
Thank you. Well, good evening, President Bitter Smith, esteemed members of governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, GCC President Dr. Hernandez, valued members of CEC, and all of our distinguished guests. My name is Warvis Gilmore Jr., the Lead Peer Success Coach for the Peer Success Program at Glendale Community College. First off, I want to say how grateful I am for the chance to share what we accomplished this past year, as well as our exciting plans for the future. This year has truly been a time of change and growth for the Peer Success Program. We've navigated a leadership transition that brought with it some fresh new metrics for success. While our mission has remained the same, we've adjusted our approach to meet our students' needs better. We, the Peer Success, play a vital role in achieving that mission. We are student-first, but also leaders on campus. We are carefully selected for our academic excellence, leadership potential, and deep commitment to helping our peers. We collaborate and support each other, continuously improving our skills through mutual feedback and shared experiences. This dynamic environment allows us to grow as both students and mentors, ensuring that we are well-equipped to guide our fellow students towards success. Our focus is to continue creating a strong sense of belonging, while providing students with a solid support system through 101 meetings with their coaches, where students can access engagement opportunities, receive referrals through campus resources, set goals, and make meaningful connections with our program and the campus community. To discuss our program's mission, accomplishments, and continued efforts, I am joined by some of our amazing Peer Success coaches. I am joined by some of our amazing Peer Success Coaches. Next slide.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jasmine Hernandez, and I'm a lead coach who has been working with GCC students since summer of 2023. Before coaches can start assisting one-on-one, students first complete a matching survey that they can choose to fill out based on their experiences as well as skills they feel they need to improve on. If they choose, they can also opt to be matched solely based on their FOI. Once matched, students can begin meeting with their coach, where we utilize our three pillars of support: connect to engage, refer to retain, and coach to achieve. Our first pillar, connect to engage, focuses on creating meaningful relationships between students and their peer success coach. This pillar recognizes that students who feel connected to their campus as a support network are more likely to take ownership of their educational journey. Our foundation for increased engagement is based upon coaches working diligently to establish trust through consistent empathetic communication and a genuine interest in students' lives, both on and off campus. Our second pillar, refer to retain, connects students to vital resources. Peer success coaches act as guides, listening to students' needs, directing and directing them to support services both on campus and in the community. As retention specialists, we ensure students have access to services tailored to their unique situations through one-on-one meetings. Our final pillar, coach to achieve, means to coach our students in areas of academic success, time management, and self-advocacy to increase the accomplishment of the students' own short and/or long-term goals, as well as persistence and retention. We provide coaching in areas that the students choose, whether that relates to professional and academic development or personal growth. Thank you, and next slide, please.
Good evening. My name is Robert Arbolita. I'm a Peer Success Coach, and I've been with the program since December of 2022. Tonight, we would like to take you on a journey at how we bring these pillars to life, the Student Success Hub. The hub is a welcoming environment where students can walk in and receive help on a drop-in basis. No appointment or matching with a coach is needed. We offer comfortable and accessible seating, a meeting space equipped with a smart board for events and presentations, and access to Chromebooks for use within the space. Thanks to our partnership with Student Leadership Team, we also provide essential school supplies, such as notebooks, markers, pens, sticky notes, and much more. On average, we approximately have 115 students visiting the Student Success Hub each week. This semester, we've established some wonderful collaborations, opportunities, working with our FOI analysts, athletics, the ACE, and honors department, helping provide additional support to their diverse student populations. This has allowed the space to be lively and energetic because of the student-centric environment that has been created. We've had the privilege of witnessing friendships and lasting connections form within our space, creating bonds that may have not developed anywhere else on campus. We also host various events throughout the year to promote academic and life skills, such as networking, avoiding academic burnout, and time management. One event we'd like to highlight is our Open House, which we host every semester. During this event, we connect students with coaches and explore our space and set their personal goals for the academic year. Next slide, please. And here's some photos showcasing our, some of the goals that students wrote and shared with us. Thank you. Next slide, please.
Given the overwhelmingly positive response to our in-person services, we've expanded our reach to ensure online students receive the same level of care, inclusivity, and support. This semester, we launched the Online Success Hub on Canvas, accessible to all students who prefer virtual support. The hub serves as a central point for communicating with students, sharing upcoming events, resources, and important information in a faster, more efficient way. Through the hub, students can access past event presentations, browse community discussion boards for answers to their questions, and even learn about study spaces and other resources on campus. We also create monthly newsletters that allow us to highlight important information every month in a fun and engaging way. Next slide, please.
You may have noticed that we've used the term "support system" as a way to describe how we impact our students' educational journey. It's with this in mind that we developed and launched alongside GCC's marketing team our Find Your Support System campaign as a branch of the Find Your Enrollment Campaign. This new campaign has allowed us to support the traditionally underrepresented population, ensuring that they feel a strong sense of belonging and have the tools to achieve their educational goals. It shows them that they are not alone, significantly enhancing their efforts for success. Enhancing their chances for success. Now we'd like to share some of the data that highlights the impact of these efforts.
Hello. My name is Colton Allen. I'm a Peer Success Coach who has been here since spring 2023. I also handle a lot of the data collecting to get a true understanding of how our students are being helped and represented. Next slide, please. Our student population closely mirrors the broader GCC demographic, with 43% identifying as Hispanic or Latino, 29.3% as Caucasian or white, and 18.3% as Black. Notably, our Black student representation is 13% higher than the general GCC population, demonstrating our commitment to ensuring underrepresented students receive the academic support necessary for their success. Next slide, please. Over the past year, our program's retention rate has increased by 5%, reaching a 58% retention rate. This means 58% of our students from fall 2023 remained in their programs and continued engaging with their peer success coaches. This rise in retention reflects the support students feel, enabling them to overcome challenges throughout their educational journey. We've also seen that students who build strong relationships with their coaches are more likely to persist in their courses and programs. Next slide, please. What drives our student retention? We are intentional about fostering consistent communication and engagement between students and their coaches. For the fall semester, as of October 25th, we've sent 7,013 individual text messages, already surpassing the 5,600 sent in spring 2024. We've also sent 477 unique emails and held 576 meetings, positioning us to exceed last year's total of 673 meetings by the end of the semester. Our most common interactions occur through in-person meetings and chat or text communications, highlighting our ongoing effort to engage students both on and off campus. We also prioritize students' preferences for communication, offering both in-person and virtual meetings based on their needs. How do we support our students? Our conversations are centered around three key themes. First, we focus on academics, checking on their class performance, connecting them with tutors, and helping them stay on top of assignments. Second, we prioritize building trust and rapport as students who feel personally invested are more likely to remain engaged in their educational journey. Finally, we discuss hobbies and interests, helping students feel a sense of belonging, both in their programs and on campus. Next slide, please. A key metric we track is meaningful connections, and that's an average. The percentage of outreach efforts, text, emails, that result in meetings or meaningful conversations. This average has increased from 51% of fall 2023 to 53% so far this semester, showing that more students are eager to engage, to connect, and engage with us ever before. Thank you. Next slide.
We are hopeful to continue reaching out to students to assist them in making an impact. Thank you for the opportunity to present our year-end review with you. Are there any questions that we can answer?
Thank you very much. A great presentation. Are there questions? Are there questions from the board for the team from Glendale? Ms. Davis?
President Bitter Smith, members of the board, I have a question. How long has this been going on?
As someone that's been the last one standing up since the program's created, it's been about two and a half years.
Well, it's excellent. Thank you for spending your valuable time participating in this.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you for your presentation. It was delightful to hear from you and observe the impact. I think it's great that you're doing the data and tracking and also the analysis that goes with that. So my question is, how are you training the next level of peers to replace you? Not that you're replaceable, but to fill in, since you probably will be moving on to another place.
Well, we go through a whole training cycle with our students. We create a whole campus campus source page for them to go through each training, learn about the different resources on campus, as well as the different things that they be doing as a coach, as well as having the previous coaches around. So it's a constant coaching with each other.
So you're replacing yourself. I mean, succession planning is always.
We can, you know, we're very.
Good for you.
Yeah, on our different expertise, you know, more the forward-facing. You've heard Colton, he's someone that's more in tune with the data. So each of us have certain skill sets that we can try to train someone on, but they're not going to be as, you can't replicate certain things.
Correct. Well, great job and good for you.
Other questions?
I'm coming. I think my shirt speaks for all of us.
We count on Dr. Norene to be themed for every meeting, so I appreciate that.
Oh, yes, Ms. Jackson Long.
Not really a question, just more like a comment, but I really think it's a great thing. I feel like it should be on all campuses, to be honest, especially with building a relationship in terms of learning about resources and how to utilize them. I feel like especially on community college, we have so many great resources for students, and a lot of them don't know or not aware about it. And when they do learn about it, it's because of word of ear or somebody they know, or just a friend being like, oh, do you know about this? And like, no, I didn't know about it. And, you know, that's majority of the time how they learn about the resources they could take advantage of. So I think this is a really great thing. I was really happy to hear from you guys and learn more about it. Never heard about this before.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you all again. You are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but it sounds like you have very busy schedules. So if you sneak out, we will not be unhappy with you.
We understand.
Would you have one substitution for this meeting this evening? Don Rector, who is the Associate Vice Chancellor and Controller, is here for Ms. Kim Grineo, Vice Chancellor of Business Services. So let's move on. Having heard from the students, let's hear from the Faculty Executive Council, Dr. Ramona Goff. Ramona, welcome.
Madam President, members of the board, Chancellor, CEC, colleagues, honored students, and guests. Faculty are like a collection of Halloween treats. They come in a wide assortment of flavors, and they all bring a little something special to their students' experiences. Some faculty members are crowd favorites. They are extremely popular for their engaging lectures and supportive natures. For example, consider Gateway Community College faculty Michelle Do. A student in her online communication course wrote, "I like everything about this class. If I could take this class 100 times, I would. As a first-generation college student, I feel known and understood. Again, thank you so much." And a student wrote this to amaze a community college professor. "I wanted to thank you for teaching this class with such passion and how it shows you really care about our success. I wanted to wait until you were done grading my assignments, so it didn't come out as insincere. But I also have a friend in one of your online, one of your in-person courses, and I just wanted you to be aware of how much your care is appreciated. You have been one of the best professors I've had in years, truly." Finally, a Paradise Valley Community College physics professor received this email. "I was in your Physics 121, Physics 131 class in 2019, 2020 school year, and I would like to share that I have recently been accepted to five PhD programs in chemical engineering. I plan to work on synthetic biology and metabolic engineering. I often look back on the times in your class, and I remember that science should be fun. Sometimes I take my lab work too seriously. When I remember the fun I had in your class, it reminds me what is really important and to not be so serious about my work all the time. I guess I just wanted to reach out and say thanks for everything you do for your students. You really are a big inspiration to so many of us." Other professors, however, are healthy treats, and they may take some time to appreciate. For example, a Scottsdale College professor received these words of gratitude. "I wanted to thank you for helping me understand the course material, especially toward the beginning of the course. I felt very out of my element in the beginning and honestly struggled to understand the direction of some of those first few assignments. Often, I only understood them due to your feedback, so I really wanted to thank you for explaining everything to me like I was a newborn. I have learned that I thrive most in settings where I am both challenged and can learn from my mistakes, and your class provided both of those environments for me. So truly, thank you so much for taking the time to invest in me as a student." Like treats with hidden fillings, there are professors who surprise you once you get to know them. For example, a student in an online economics class at Australia Mountain Community College was surprised by Professor Eric Hunsinger. "I wanted to send you a thank you message outside the Canvas app to show my appreciation for what you've done for me. Your creativity and passion for education has forever changed the way I think. From this point forward, I have begun to think, what about this topic do I not understand instead of, I don't agree with it, it's stupid?" Mortimer J. Adler says that "a true teacher enlightens the student and helps them read between the lines of what has been written. I feel you truly enlightened me, and I'm still reading and looking for ways to satisfy my curiosity about economics. You made a real impact on me, and I've never even met you in real life." Similarly, Donna Tannehill from Rio Solado College proved that "not all math teachers are created equal. I am a full-time student at the University of Arizona. I took Math 100 my freshman year. Once I realized I would not pass math, I signed up to take the same class at Pima Community College. I ended up failing that class, and I knew I had to get this credit done to graduate. My academic advisor recommended that I take Math 152 at Rio Solado. I was not confident at all going into this, and I was very hesitant to reach out to the teacher because of my prior experiences. However, I emailed Dr. Tannehill. She responded right away and even offered to meet me on Zoom. Instead of telling me to get a tutor, which I already had, she offered extra help, and she was an encouraging voice. She is what colleges need, more teachers that go out of their way to help their students and to show them that they care. Finally, most of our faculty are hidden gems, professors just doing their jobs but impact students in powerful ways. For example, Laura Swantek, Phoenix College Anthropology Factor faculty, she is the kind of teacher that inspires everyone to be a teacher. She breaks down information very well, pays attention to how the class is following along, and does not hesitate to review or spend longer time on a topic if needed. She gives a healthy workload that keeps you engaged but does not overwhelm you. All in all, one of the best teachers I have had." Or Christine Jones, English faculty at Glendale Community College, who received this message after discussing a student's right to their accommodation. "You were a lifesaver when you took your time to speak to me about what it was to be a student. You never sugar-coated reality, and you never doubted me. I can't express right now what your support means to me and my family." And Chandler Gilbert, Community College Geology Professor, Jeff Simpson, whose student wrote, "I have never been a good student academically, and for the first time in my life, I felt smart because of you in this class. Because of this class, I have grown confidence in myself and my intelligence." And finally, now McCarthy, Web Design Development Faculty from South Mountain Community College, whose student wrote, "I took your Photoshop class in the spring of 2016. The way you encouraged me led me to graduate with certificates and degrees in web development and graphic design, as well as in behavioral health science. I graduated from South Mountain and then transferred to NAU, where I have finally accomplished my dream of earning a bachelor's degree, and am now considering a new dream, studying for my master's degree in my mid-50s. I want to say thank you because it was your support and encouraging words that a woman in her late 40s was able to finally believe in herself and pursue her dream and passion. With my whole heart, thank you." Tonight, I have shared just 10 of the 160 testimonials I read in preparation. Tonight I have shared just 10 of the 160 testimonials I read in preparation for tonight's presentation. Testimonials that show that MCCCD students not only receive a low-cost education, they receive experiences that are priceless. Thank you.
Ramona, thank you. Very helpful. Uh, let's now then move on to the adjunct faculty, Kim Boach. Kim?
Good evening, President Bittersmith, our esteemed governing board members, the Ethereal Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC and our honored guests for the evening. Shared governance is currently a topic of much discussion in many councils and committees throughout Maricopa County Community College District. With the restructuring of the district-level shared governance councils and the development of councils and charters to best represent the equitable distribution of voices and the development of shared governance structures on individual campuses, it's a timely and important matter. When Gail Haas was the AFA president and also as mentor to AFG, she distributed several surveys to capture adjunct input and understanding of the topic. Through those surveys, as well as questionnaires that we had the adjunct faculty participate in district-wide in the past year, we have found that adjunct faculty want to participate in shared governance, but they're either unsure how to, or they feel that they're not given the chance. A report that Gail produced found, and I'll quote her here, "Further studies, surveys, and collaboration revealed that significant minority of adjuncts wanted to be more involved with the college community. There had been a spoken perception that adjuncts were not paid enough to worry about anything more than their classes. AFA leadership assumed that the outcome of this paradigm actually contributed to the feeling of being left out for the adjuncts who had an interest in what was going on. People have had more of a sense of belonging, belonging when they are informed and included in functions and operations, especially if they are tangential, tangential to their teaching. This was probably the beginning of a shift towards district-wide inclusion in shared governance. Our adjunct faculty group is, has been engaging in discussion about shared governance as well and how it's employed at each college. From the adjunct perspective, we have found that shared governance is experienced differently throughout the district. Uh, some see it as a committee and others view it as a concept. Uh, some colleges have adjunct faculty sitting on councils, while others limit the participation adjuncts can have in the college meetings. The leadership team and representatives of the AFG are researching ways currently in which adjunct faculty participate in shared governance on each campus, and we hope to bring equitable representation of the adjunct voices as well as opportunities available for us in participation. Uh, there are also differences in the expectations for participation between residential faculty and adjunct faculty, as well as questions about compensation for participation. So currently, we're trying to take all of this information and see how we can put it together in a way that we can share with you what way we can unite as we move forward. Um, as adjunct faculty representatives, our mission is not only to serve our adjunct faculty, but to engage them and help them connect to their colleges. I will say that getting involved as an adjunct faculty rep was pivotal for me in feeling connected to Phoenix College and to the district at large. Uh, we plan to collect the data, uh, to collect our data regarding the differences in the adjunct faculty shared governance experiences and share it with the district leadership so that we can sh- develop shared governance opportunities that have continuity throughout the district and contribute to our adjunct faculty engagement and equity. Uh, I would also like to, um, highlight a couple of other things that people have been doing in the district, some of our adjuncts. Uh, both GCC and, or CGCC and, uh, South Mountain had held chat and chew events for the adjunct faculty to meet with leadership and share ideas. Uh, and I have a big thank you to our reps and DTAs who made that happen. Um, we also have, uh, I just found out that Glendale Community College is offering a solve the mystery, mystery of getting hired. Uh, we will be promoting this from the adjunct faculty group to the adjunct faculty district-wide to participate in, so it's not just going to be a GCC event. And, uh, hopefully we'll find some more information about how we can share different opportunities with our adjuncts. I also hope to bring one of our representatives from Gateway to the governing board meeting sometime soon. I, November, if I'm able, if, if his schedule allows, to share some of the data we have been collecting that he's been working on that showed the adjunct experience and the adjunct, that I'll just say, run the numbers on how we're engaged, where we're engaged, and what our opportunities are, uh, so that we can give you guys access to our work and see how that can help impact, um, all of the committees and all of the government, governance that we are doing. So thank you again for letting, uh, us update on our work, update you on our work in the AFG, and we always appreciate this. Uh, do we have any questions?
Any questions for Kim? Thank you very much.
You so much.
And then let's move on to April Rowan and Jason Rich from Staff Representation. Welcome, April.
Welcome. Good evening, President Bittersmith, uh, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, President's Council, and all members, all guest members this evening. Next slide, please. We are civically engaged at Maricopa. Many of our campuses are having various activities and events to help our students, employees, and our surrounding communities to become informed, aware, civically engaged, and be registered to vote. Here are some examples of our 10 campuses and the district. Next slide, please. So the Center for Excellent and Inclusive, um, Inclusive Democracy, known as CEID, talk about efforts across the district. Next slide, please. As you can see, we have polling and voting locations throughout our, um, different colleges, uh, which are collaborating with Maricopa County elections to establish 10 drop boxes, locations, and nine vote, uh, voting locations. Next slide, please. CEID, Constitution Day, uh, was celebrated September 17th, uh, with a week-long series of virtual events to open, open to students, staff, and community members. This year's events focused on civic engagement beyond voting and propositions on the 2024 ballot. Next slide, please. For the very first time this year, we celebrated Free Speech Week, which happened last week. This is the first year ever Maricopa celebrates free speech with virtual events focused on free expression and higher education. Next slide, please. Uh, we created resources to provide general information to voters. If you click on the QR code, you can get more information or by simply, uh, following that link as well. Next slide, please. So one of the biggest hits this year was the Student Public Forum. Students will have the opportunity to meet with a variety of elected officials at the local, state, and federal level, along with those working in the public policy arena. Next slide, please. As you see in the campus report, many campuses participated in external efforts in the Fair Election Centers Campus Vote Project. I'm going to pass it on to Jason.
Um, so this was just an example of one of the organizations that the colleges worked with. Um, as we go through the next slide, um, you'll see that when we reached out to the colleges and asked them to tell us what they'd been working on, we got a lot. When there's no, uh, we don't have the time to go through everything, so we're just going to try and provide some highlights. We encourage you to take a look at the presentation if you want to dig into more of what each of the campuses are doing. Uh, first one, I want to point out Chandler Gilbert, um, they worked with a group called, um, All In, and they were able to get a Silver Campus Award from them. Um, several of the campuses in the district worked with them, um, and they also developed several strategies. Next slide, please. Um, and events, and so you can see some pictures of students at different events that they were holding. Slide please. At Gateway, they were able to, um, use their service learning in combination, um, to create a program they called Your Voice or Future. Next slide, please. Glendale, you can see they, uh, they had, um, voting locations at both their main campus and the north campus in there. I'm pretty proud of that. Uh, next slide, please. So as, as April mentioned, they, um, we held Arizona Student Voting Summit. This is a picture from one that was featured in Mesa Legend that was held at Mesa Community College. And as we'll see, um, students from other campuses went there, so we'll have some highlights from that. Next slide, slide please. You can see Mesa had a lot of things going on. They made a full page with calendars and different things, um, and they were the host of that event. But you can see they have lots of cool things. We go to the next slide. One of the things that they engaged with was a competition that was put on by Levi's, um, Showtime and MTV, Good Trouble Collaboration, and the All-In Campus Democracy Challenge. And they actually came in second place nationally. So there was an event held at their campus last week, uh, where they brought in DJs and held a big event. Um, and part of the thing that's going on with that is what they call Party of the Polls, where they're holding big, um, music events at many campuses across the country, where they encourage students to come in, cast their vote, and then stay around to, um, watch the results together and have community around the, the day. Next slide, please. Paradise Valley was even able to get a celebrity, um, person to come and, um, talk to students. Jim O'Hare from Parks and Rep did a, a nice presentation on why it's important for our students to go and vote, and it's up on their, uh, their Instagram page for everybody in the district to go and, and see. Um, the link is in the, uh, the document if you want to check that out. Next slide, please. Okay. We see Rio Salado also got the Silver Campus Award from the, um, All-In Democracy Challenge, as well as they are holding many different events. Next slide, please. You can see at, in this image, um, from their northern location where they held an event there out in North Mountain Village area. One of the key things that they did was, um, they have a democracy fellowship. They brought students in for weekly sessions throughout the semester. Um, next slide, please. And here you can see a few of those, um, fellows at the, um, student session at Mesa. Slide please. And here you can see more, uh, images from around the valley, the, of different events they hold, putting in this room. Um, Scottsdale, you can see, also has a lot of different things going on. And you can see, like I mentioned, they're having an election day watch party right in Arty's Lounge, so they're opening up to everybody from 11:45 to 1:30. Slide please. And here at South Mountain, you can see they, um, held a session they called Your Vote, Your Power. They're able to bring, um, people from the community come in and share what's going on there. There's much more going on. Like I said, we only had so much time, so we just want to show some highlights of the various things that are going on and, and show that as we've been going to the campuses where they have the voting locations, they're very busy. There was like three or four people walking in the library at Mesa when I went there today, all going to that voting location, and a lot of people are busy in there. Next, we're going to do our Glendale Community College Spotlight Report, and I'm going to invite-
Yeah. Good evening, Ms. President Bittersmith, governing board members, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC, and distinguished guests. My name is Jackie Martin, and I'm the Staff Senator for Glendale Community College. Tonight, we've heard some fantastic, um, Glendale Community College works and Genesis Tool and some of the great work with our, um, students as well. And I'm here tonight to represent the staff, um, representatives. Next slide, please. When I'm also the Vice President of Ability Maricopa, um, our disability advocacy group, and I've been with the district about 15 years. Tonight, I am representing Amy Marple, our non-exempt staff, Gloria Lorenz, Jody Pennington, as well as our sworn officers, Kelly Yamamori. And we have an alternate, Willie Jackson and DJ Hanson, and I want to give them a shout out because they're really helpful in getting us everywhere we need to be. Also, the exempt reps, Cicely Davis, Eric Palowski, and me. So I want to have a little fun tonight. I brought some archived information from about 40 years ago, and it's a newspaper from Glendale Community College. I was a student, um, but I was also in daycare when my mom was a first-generation student. So I know what the campus looked like for about 40 years, and, um, my mom recently passed, and I was going through a box of newspapers, and I was like, why all these newspapers? And it was a newspaper I was in when I was five on this slide. I know, it's so nerdy. Um, I'm eating a sandwich. I was in daycare, and I have to tell you, there's something very powerful about our daycare because it teaches students what it's like to be on campus and something to yearn for their whole life. Um, we do really good work. Um, we have daycare on other campuses, including, I won't, I won't name them all, but, so that's a little fun fact, if anybody wants to see this afterwards. Next slide, please. So what's going on at Glendale Community College? Well, something really exciting is we're turning 60 this year, and we are going to be celebrating all year long. Our initial board approval was in spring of 65, so we're going to be kicking this off in the 2025 year. A lot of exciting things are coming, so keep, keep tuned. We have a really neat themed photos, and things haven't been released yet. Today, I'm going to be presenting on how hard staff's been working. So we heard some of the wonderful works of our students, but our staff has been working. Fit, fit, um, back one side, please. Thank you. Um, I want to present and make sure to highlight our three pillars at GCC. It should be professional, also to utilize shared governance, and elevating college-wide commitments. Next slide, thank you. And one of the college-wide commitments I am so proud to present tonight is the ACE's work, and this is actionable change for employees. And what we're working on is a shared governance, governance framework to be able to support a shifting culture for employees. And we are going to be working, um, with task forces in different areas, um, to support each other, so we can support our students better. And we're working through our college goals with these committee forces to focus on vision, accountability, to track projects, so we can really, you know, measure where we've been and where we're going, um, as well as employee recognition to really spotlight those people, people going above and beyond, and to improve service overall. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. So thank you all for the, particularly about what's happening on Election Day on our campuses. Uh, I've had the opportunity to talk to, um, April and Jason over the last few months about this moving, and so it's great to see the final report. Also, just editorial comment, it makes me feel better that I am not the only person who has yellowed newspapers that their parents saved, so thought about that. Are there any questions, Batim? Not. Thank you very much. We have no, uh, Ameritai or awards this evening, so we are now, uh, at the point where we can't hear from the Chancellor, who is floating above somewhere. Uh, Dr. Gonzalez, uh, thank you. It's, I know it's late where you are, but thank you for still being with us, and we are ready for your report.
Thank you, President Bittersmith and members of the board. Um, I, in addition to my typical update, there will be a portion that includes the Maricopa Foundation's semi-annual update, so that at this time, I would like to invite Julie Reese, who is the Foundation President, or Foundation Board President, excuse me, and she's going to provide the, the update for the Foundation for the 2024 fiscal year. As always, I want to thank, um, members of the Foundation Board who volunteer and dedicate their time to support, uh, the colleges and to ensure that our students have an opportunity for accessible and affordable education. So, um, Julie, please take it away.
Thank you so much, Chancellor. Good evening, President Bittersmith, governing board members, Provost, CEC, distinguished guests. It's a privilege to be with you tonight. I am Julia Reese, as the Chancellor introduced, and I'm joined tonight by my esteemed colleagues from the Foundation. I have Carolyn Lynch, who is the incoming Chair of the Board, and also our President and CEO, Brian Spicker. So, uh, thanks to both of them for being here as well. As I kick this off, I did want to acknowledge President Bittersmith. She received some very well-deserved recognition from the Arizona Capital Times Today as a woman of achievement. And I just wanted to share that at the Foundation, we have benefited from her dedication and achievement for several years, uh, most recently as the immediate past Co-Chair of our Heroes of Education event. So congratulations, but in the picture.
We're going to talk, I want to interrupt your report. I do also want to mention, we have one other district employee, I'm not an employee, who was recognized. Lindsay Wilson was very much a part of that award ceremony too, and she does a great job, companion with, kind of promoting the things the Foundation does. So, thank you for that.
Fantastic. We'll like you- Well, like you, our volunteer board at the foundation and our professional staff are deeply committed to the students, the students throughout the Maricopa Community Colleges. So we have, next slide, please, some important data points to share with you here tonight. There is a lot to love on this slide, but I will note there are two typos. So if you'll bear with me, the first line, you can just X all of that out. We're not going to focus on the number of funds. That was not something that was supposed to be included. Did want to mention total number of submitted applications. If you look at the evolution since twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four, we are very pleased to have a significant increase in the number of students applying for the foundation scholarships. And I think that that's a great testament to the hard work of the governing board, of the foundation board, and the district as a whole in terms of getting the word out to students so that they know that they can apply. I also want to acknowledge that those fourteen thousand nine hundred scholarships were each reviewed by volunteer scholarship reviewers. So we are hugely indebted to the volunteers who donate their time and energy to evaluate those applications. In terms of the total number of awards, if you look at the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four column, that number on your screen is actually an error. The correct number is five thousand four hundred and fifty-eight number of awards. So I think that's something that we can all be very proud of. That's a significant increase over fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. But as I look at this slide and its totality, I think the most impressive achievement is the fifth line from the top. The total number of dollars awarded has grown over a million dollars over a two-year period. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, the foundation surpassed three point nine six million dollars in scholarships awarded to students in the colleges. And that is a testament to tremendous donors, to the market growth, but also to the success of Heroes Education, Heroes of Education, and to the tremendous work again of all of the folks in this room. So thank you for everyone for contributing to that. We look forward to continuing to grow that amount at the foundation and for your support in that. Also wanted to share just briefly a few of the characteristics of the recipients of those scholarships. As you note from the slide, the average award is in the seven hundred and twenty-five dollar range. Most scholarships have a needs-based criteria as well as a GPA criteria. And as we look at the recipients, sixty-five percent were first-generation students. Also wanted to note that the average age of a scholarship awardee is twenty-six. The cumulative GPA for our awardees is three point two-nine. And the demographics are fifty percent Hispanic, twenty-seven percent white, ten percent black. And most impactful as well, the good news is that our recipients had a seventy-nine percent retention rate semester to semester. So thank you again for all of your support for the foundation. I'm now going to invite Caroline to come and share some more information about emergency funds and basic needs.
Thank you, Julie, and good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I wanted to talk briefly about the foundation's emergency and basic needs assistance. As many of you know, scholarships may be the core of the foundation's financial assistance to students, but our assistance doesn't stop there. So many of our students rely on additional funds in order to see their degrees through to completion. And so emergency basic needs assistance can be anything from food cards or utilities, rent support, really just those basic daily needs that the students need to attend classes, to be able to make it to work in addition to their academic studies. And so just to point out a couple of figures from the chart in front of you. You'll see that from FY twenty-twenty-two to FY twenty-four, we did see a drop in the number of students who were awarded this assistance. That's really kind of coming out of the pandemic and coming out of the, the increase in need that we received and that we saw during the pandemic. But I think it's also important to note that while the number of students awarded has gone down slightly, the number of awards, awards has increased dramatically. And what that tells us is that their financial need has become more dire over the last few years. So you'll see that twelve thousand, over twelve thousand awards were granted to twelve hundred students for FY twenty-twenty-four. And again, you'll also see that there is a growth in the amount awarded. And the foundation is dedicated to continuing to raise funds to support this type of assistance for our students. You'll also see that the average award amounted is down just slightly from FY twenty-three, but also a higher amount overall from FY twenty-twenty-two. And I'll note that last row for you. What does it mean for average turnaround time? That point-five number, that point-seven number, that point-eight number, that's a number of days. That means that we're answering the call within a day on average for every request for emergency assistance that we're receiving. Thank you so much. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Caroline, or Julie for that matter? If not, before I let Mr. Spicker speak, I just want to again say thank you to the two of you and your board. You work very, very hard, and we appreciate what you do. And as you can see from the numbers, it makes a difference. So on behalf of the board of state. Brian.
So this is a slide that looks at the number of new funds. So we look at a lot of metrics at the foundation. And this particular slide shows the new funds that have come into the foundation, both restricted funds and endowed funds. And we're, we're so excited about the number of endowed funds that came in at a hundred thousand apiece. Typically, the new endowed funds are in the ten thousand dollar level. That's the starting level for new endowments. But PC brought in the Malcolm Gulick Jr. Scholarship Endowment. They also brought the Gail and William Jamison Scholarship Endowed Fund, both in excess of a hundred and eighty-five thousand. And then the Darcy Renfro Memorial Fund was started, and that's well over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then Glendale Community College had the Thompson Family Endowment. We also have received some grants of note from the Intel Semiconductor Educational Pathways for Engineering at Chandler Gilbert, as well as the Nina Mason Polium Legacy Scholarship Program Grant of a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Intel was two hundred thousand, and more recently, JP Morgan Chase Foundation gave a grant for the Incredible Incarcerated Reentry Program at Rio Salado. So as a preview with some of what you can expect to see this next year, Loews Foundation provided a grant of over one million dollars for construction trade for multiple colleges across our system. The Helios Foundation is working with our foundation over a promised Maricopa grant of one point two million and three hundred thousand dollars to match Title V endowed Programs with our colleges. And we expect to see more of that over the course of the next few, few months. But the next slide really says it all. So the trick was the typos, right? The treat is what you're seeing in front of you. At, at first I said, Julie, you really ought to say, thanks, Brian, for giving me the slide with the typos, you know. But what's important to note are the contributions. And so the, the contributions have typically over the years, if you, you looked at the foundation over a ten-year period, we were at the four to five million. We've been consistently at the nine and ten million mark the last, last three years. And we expect to get it to thirteen next and keep building that baseline of an annual level of contribution. You can see our returns have grown over the course of the last three years, with twenty-twenty-two being a difficult year in any market and having an unrealized loss of four point three million. But what's critical is the third line. That's the total benefit to the district. And what that is, is it scholarships? It stipends to students. It's internships. It is the emergency funds. But more recently, we've been doing much more material support to colleges for faculty, for material support in delivering education. This past year, it was two point five million. So you can see the foundation has moved from just being a scholarshiping organization to that and doubling down on it, and moving forward to being an even greater asset to the, the district. And it's only possible because of the partnership we have with the colleges, the college presidents, the resource development officers, and our fantastic board. And we have two board members on our board, Kelly, Mrs. Kelly Butler and Dr. Tom Norene. Tom is working with me on a twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand dollar matching opportunity with dual enrollment across the system. And so thank you for that. And lastly, our total corpus has grown, and I'm sorry, Chancellor, we did eleven minutes. I had the timer on, but I'll blame my board, board members for that.
The time thing. So. But thank you. Are there questions from the board, just to the foundation team? Ms. Solomon?
Your report is very impressive, and Brian, we've seen so much growth under your leadership, so wanted to acknowledge that publicly. I do recall when I joined the board, we were discussing the future of the foundation. And I think with your leadership, and I'll get to the board in a minute, but with your leadership, it's really made a difference. So I want to stall genuinely. Thank you. And the other is you as a board certainly have represented the work you do and, and the support for students, but you're so much more than that. I've had opportunities certainly to work with you outside of the construct of what we do as a foundation and personally want to express my thank you for your leadership, for things that are very, very important to us, and how you have genuinely supported our future. So thank you for letting me say that out loud to you. So thank you for your leadership.
Ms. Jackson Long.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a comment from the student perspective. I am one of the students who have been able to benefit from the Maricopa Foundation, and it truly is a blessing to our pursuit of education and that kind of thing. Even unexpected scholarships I didn't expect to win or be awarded. Truly grateful to even, I think I learned about the Maricopa Foundation before I even entered college. So it was already something I learned about and I was able to take advantage of. So truly thank you guys for your work and being able to provide students with a chance at higher education.
Thank you, Julie. With that, I will just echo the, the entire board's thank yous for all of your work collectively, both on Bren, on your staff team, and from the volunteer team. It does, the numbers prove there, does make a difference, but you also have personal testimony from a board member, so. Thank you for that.
I just have to call out Ms. Lynch.
What many of us could call up Ms. Lynch.
Yes, I know. Would you do? Well, you're the daughter of someone who was a key leader in your father as well, the leader in this community, and the fact that you've carried on their legacy would make them both extremely proud. So thank you. So that just ages me every morning.
Dr. Gonzalez, I suspect you have more to report.
I, I certainly do, President Better Smith. Thank you, Brian, Julie, and Caroline, and Brian, for every minute that you went over your planned time as an extra fifty thousand dollars per minute that you now must raise for the foundation. So that's, that's how we will solve that problem. Thank you. On this more serious note here, so you had the students from Glendale who presented and did a really good job about the peer programs that they do. Just a little bit more information about Glendale. Their headcount is up three percent from the same time last year, and dual enrollment is up a whopping twenty percent. And at the start of the semester, Glendale's new student population was up five percent over the fall twenty-twenty-three semester. And continuing students were up four percent, which is demonstrates a positive impact overall retention rates. Glendale recently received a hundred thousand dollars from an anonymous donor for upgrades to its athletic facilities. And Glendale student athletes have seen an increase in their GPA from three point zero five to three point one seven on average when we compared to this time last year. So their coaches require that they participate in excuse me, facilitated, sorry, group study time. It is a little late over here on the East Coast, by the way, if that hasn't been mentioned already, Mrs. Better Smith. Points of pride at Glendale are that they've, they are, they have been awarded a redesignation as a Center of Academic Excellence and Cyber Defense through twenty-twenty-nine from the National Security Agency and the Department of Defense. The college received its original designation in two thousand nineteen. And the Arizona Department of Homeland Security is also partnering with the college's Gaucho Security Operations Center program for a regional securities operations center. This will provide some internship opportunities and of course, you know, some career opportunities for students that come through these programs. And the, the Gaucho Security Operations Center received Westmark's Excellence and Innovation Award at the twenty-twenty-four Annual Best of the West Awards Dinner that just took place earlier in the week, so congratulations to them. Moving on to a strategic goal update. All right, this is a pretty exciting update to provide. One of the things that we focused on, on goal one point one was to attract, recruit, engage, and enroll more students. And so I want to talk about some efforts that took place over this past year that focused specifically on re-enrolling Maricopa stopout students. So under the leader of, under the leadership of Dr. Keisha Brock and a cross-functional team across college district office team, they developed a multi-pronged approach to conduct outreach and assist stopout students going back almost three years. And the goal was to re-enroll five to seven percent of the targeted population. The approach that they used involved social media re-engagement and retargeting, digital assets and email drip campaigns, Maricopa Contact Center campaign, and the use of a third-party servicer campaign. The third-party group was called Sexton. And based on the set of parameters that they used, the ninety-nine thousand students were identified as the target population. And then through this, through this multi-pronged approach, they, and, and during the course of a little more than two months, thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-three students were re-enrolled for the fall semester, which is almost a fourteen percent conversion rate. Now, this is what's, what I think is also pretty amazing, and the fact that nearly fourteen thousand students who stopped out now are back in Maricopa, they've taken a total of one hundred and eighteen thousand credits, which is about eight point five seven credits per student on average. The return investment on that is if, if we use ninety-seven dollars per credit hour multiplied by those number of credits, that's eleven, nearly eleven point five million dollars in revenue that would have just been left off the table and, and not acquired had, had it not been for this goal and the targeted work of Dr. Brock and her team in the colleges. So I know that faculty and staff across our system were involved in that really important work. So I want to congratulate the team and commend them on their good work there. For legislative update, we've had a total of six officials or candidates for state legislators visited our colleges recently, specifically at Chandler Gilbert, Mason, Estrella Mountain. We've conducted two personalized campus tours for council member Lauren Kubi at Mesa and Senator John Kavanaugh at PV. And as always, we continue to build our relationships with our legislative partners, and additional visits are already being planned for next month's calendar. Related to budget, you know, our recent cadence for presentations of the governing board has been to present information about revenue projections during the work session ahead of the regular board meeting in November. With the impending vote regarding resetting our base expenditures for the expense limitation calculation occurring just next week, we're going to delay presenting any information on budget development for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six until at least December's meeting, possibly January of twenty-twenty-five even. We just want to be sure that we're sharing information that is of, you know, latest and greatest and, and of course, pending the, the outcome of next week's vote. In the audience tonight, you should have a number of, of people who are there, our employees, and women specifically, that are participating in the Linda B. Rosenthal's Women's Mentor Program and are joining us this evening. I'm going to pause and ask them to stand if they're in the audience, so you can see who I'm talking about here. So the, the Women's Mentor Program is Maricopa's longest-running professional development program. It's currently in its 24th year. It provides participants with the opportunity to explore and gain a deeper understanding of the organization while focusing on professional growth and learning goals to enhance their skills as future leaders in Maricopa. This year, there are 39 mentees participated, participating in the program, representing nine of the 10 campuses and district office, and I want to congratulate them on investing in their professional development and invite them to stand and be recognized. I guess they, we've already done that, but I want to, I want to, uh, encourage them now.
Stand again. Do you want to stand again?
Again, all right, we're standing again. Um, thank you all for, for participating in this program. Um, I've seen firsthand the, uh, the tremendous, uh, work that it's done on individuals who, um, participate and continue to grow inside of Maricopa as a result of putting themselves out there and stretching some professional muscle. So, uh, President Bitter Smith, that concludes my update. I appreciate your patience for this, uh, normal, this longer than normal update. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. And recognizing it's 10:35 your time, I'm impressed you're still awake. And I, again, are welcome to Linda Rosenthal. Mentorship program attendees, thank you for sitting through the meeting. Are there questions for Chancellor? Go to bed. If not, we will, the rest of the agenda is very light. We'll, we'll hurry, Dr. Gonzalez, because you have, you have a big assignment tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Um, I do not have any cards for the citizens interim unless, so we'll, we'll move on. Um, and let's go on to then to the consent agenda. And the items on the consent agenda are there as consent matters unless they remove from the consent agenda. Um, at this time, do any board members with the chancellor have anything they want to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Dr. Gonzalez, you okay?
Yes, President Bitter Smith.
Yes, yeah, Donna's telling me, I just told you to go to bed, um, but we gotta hang on for a couple more items. Um, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved, moved by Ms. Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Davis. All those in favor, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Dr. Thor. By a vote of six and the student advisory vote, consent agenda is approved. Let's move on then to the non-consent action items. Um, and we have just one of those. And that is the number one, which is the approval of the memorandum of understanding for the 2024-25 Residential Faculty Agreement. And that is suspension of Articles 14.11 and 14.12. Is there a motion to approve that, that suspension?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Dr. Narini, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Um, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Again, by a vote of six plus a student advisor vote, the board approves the suspension of Articles 14.11 and 14.12, the 2024-25 Residential Faculty Agreement. Um, first read of information items, employment and separations, August 17, 2024 to September 2024. Board members, are there any questions? Not monitoring reports, the budget analysis report. Fund one, general unrestricted fund for the three months ending 9/30/2024. Board members, again, are there any questions? Seeing none, we are now on to community linkage. Um, and I think I'd like to start with Ms. Jackson Long, our student trustee, because she's been busy at least for the last week, I know, because she joined us. So with that, Tamia?
Um, yeah, so I have a list, actually. I was writing it. Um, so early in October, from October 4th to the 6th, we had our aisle retreat. Um, intercollegiate student leadership experience up in Prescott with a large, um, um, amount of students from all across the community college district. Um, it was an amazing turnout. I think we had around 180 students. Um, which, you know, totaled around 200 people, including, you know, um, staff and volunteers and that kind of thing. Um, it was, you know, once again, what really great turnout. Um, I was able to, you know, get to know more of the essence of all the student bodies from all the, um, individual colleges as well as, um, you know, getting together with a lot of student leaders. I think I can envision that a lot. Um, students are going to become more implemented and more united in the things that they do, um, in the future of Maricopa. And I'm really excited for that. And, um, yeah, it was really great turnout for the aisle retreat. Um, at Gateway, we held a domestic violence awareness event where we worked with our, um, local campus, um, officers, um, to learn about the importance of, um, understanding and identifying, um, domestic violence and the trends within it and just, um, understanding that it's important to not just recognize it as just a month, but recognize that this is something that people go through and that, um, we need to understand the importance of it. Um, and then I was also able to attend the retiring breakfast at Gateway. Um, I was really happy to get to know, um, the people who spent a lot of their time, um, at our campus and, um, and how their legacies have moved forward and been implemented throughout Gateway, even after their time departing. And, you know, just eat some really good food. It was a really great event. Um, and that was a really great event I attended. And then also, um, I think it was last Friday, I attended the Arizona Student Leader, um, Covenant at the Capitol where, um, I believe the student, Arizona student, Arizona Board of Regents also attended. They do their presentation um, about the things that are going on, um, not only throughout community colleges, but also, um, our state universities. And, um, you know, the issues that are going on, not just like, um, on a local level, but also a state level and, um, you know, legislative concepts. And, um, the importance of, you know, understanding what's going on. Um, for sure that, um, in our current times, students are facing an environment where there's not a lot of support and that kind of thing. And, you know, we discussed many things that we can implement to improve the condition, not only for students, but also for faculty, for also the people who are supporting students and helping them get through their pursuit of higher education.
I told you she was busy, but she missed one big one.
Sorry, um, last week I was able to go to Seattle with our locally governing board members to the ACCT, um, convention. I was able to learn a lot, um, especially from a professional experience about, um, being a trustee. Um, not only just like a student trustee, but in general and advocating for the many aspects, um, of life that students go through and that kind of thing. And, um, there is just so much I learned. I can't, I would be talking for a long time if I talked about everything, but, um, it was definitely an enlightening experience and I was really happy to get to know, um, the government members on a more personal level as well. So that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson Lee. Uh, Ms. Butler.
Thank you. Um, I was able to attend the Pete C. Garcia Victoria Foundation Higher Ed Awards, uh, recently was held at Helios and we had three members of our, um, college community were recognized there and I want to highlight them real quick. Uh, first, Dr. Linda Thor, uh, our governing board member was honored with the Edith Sayer Auslander Outstanding Support of Hispanic Issues in Higher Education Award. The award is presented to an individual in the community who has demonstrated significant contributions to issues impacting socially and economically deprived communities. So it was so neat to hear, uh, Dr. Thor accept that award and give some of her background. Also recognized and awarded was Dr. Richard Daniel, uh, president of Mesa Community College. He was the recipient of the Dr. Louis Olivias Distinguished Leadership in Higher Education Award. This award celebrates exceptional administrators in higher education who have demonstrated excellence in their profession and have been ardent advocates for Latina students, faculty and staff. There he had a wonderful story about his upbringing and inspiration, uh, to become a college president. It was really neat to hear that story. And then Nadine Narroya Rodriguez, Director of Journalism and New Media Studies in the English Department at MCC. She received the Dr. Alfredo G. de la Santos Junior Outstanding Latina Faculty Service Teaching in Higher Education Award, which is a big mouthful. Uh, it was presented to individuals for their commitment to student achievement and outstanding teaching and leadership. Uh, it was just really fun to be there and, and see, um, our folks from the colleges who are working so hard and being recognized and hear all of their stories. It was a fun event.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Uh, Ms. Davis.
Um, I was able to attend the HLC, um, event, it's not really an event, meeting with, um, Paradise Valley Community College. And that was very interesting because I'd never done anything like that before. And it was interesting, the questions that they asked and the information that they wanted to know about. I was very glad that, um, President Bitter Smith and Dr. Narini were there with me so they could answer all those good, hard questions. Um, and then last week I was in Seattle with our student trustee and some other members of our board, um, learning about community college trustee stuff. My favorite part of that conference is networking with all the other different, um, community colleges. Um, I happened to sit at lunch with my hometown community college trustee person, which was great. And then, um, you know, to ask people about their community college and, you know, how big they were and, oh, we have 2,500 students. And I'm thinking, wow, yikes. Compared to us, that's, that's miniscule, but I've sat with people from Cape Cod and from New Orleans and it's so fun to sit with people and learn about what they're doing. I also went to sessions about the new partnerships between, um, the Head Start and community colleges. And that was very interesting to learn about because childcare is a huge issue, I know, for students across our state. So, um, so it was, it was a great conference and I'm glad I had the opportunity to go. So that's my report. Thank you.
Dr. Narini.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I do went to the, the Victoria Foundation, um, awards to honor all of our, uh, Maricopa folks. And on the 26th, I went to the Verna McLean Student Emergency Fund fundraiser over at South Mountain, uh, Community College, which was outstanding. We got to meet with some of the students who received the, the award and listen to their stories. Uh, on October 9th, I accepted Dr. Webb's, uh, invitation to go to the Mesa Community College's New Media Lab, uh, for, and participate in their podcast. On October 14th, I, I too went to Paradise Valley for the reaffirmation of the, uh, HLC accreditation. And on, let's see, the 16th, I went to, uh, Estrella Mountain for the Gallery 27 ribbon cutting of the sculpture that was designed and created by the students. Uh, it was, it's an outstanding sculpture. It's outside, so you can just walk by it and you have to look at it from both sides. There's a, there's a, uh, symbol or, uh, a message on both sides of it. Um, and then just as a community member of the 19th, I saw an excellent play at Paradise Valley, uh, Drop Dead. So unfortunately it's not playing anymore, but it's an excellent play produced by the students. Um, and then of course, last week I was at ACT too, uh, in, in Seattle as well. And so I want to thank, uh, Tommy and Lauren for their excellent preparation of, uh, of our presentation that, that we gave on Route to Relief. So thank you so much. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Narini. Dr. Thor?
Uh, thank you. I have just a short report. Uh, first, I would like to thank my colleagues on the board who did attend the Pete C. Garcia of Victoria Foundation Awards. It meant a great deal to me for you to be there. Um, and then I also want to congratulate our president, Susan Bitter Smith, as well as, uh, Lindsay Wilson on receiving the Arizona Capital Times Women Achievers Award. Uh, it was an honor to be with you. That concludes my report.
Linda, thank you very much. Ms. Sullivan.
And good evening. Happy Halloween, trick or treat, all of those good things. Uh, before I comment on what I've been doing over the last month, I need to issue a public apology. And, uh, it's kind of embarrassing, but I'm going to do it anyway. And that is, some of you may recall that we had a student here from Mesa who declared and talked about a food, uh, campaign. And I threw out that the board could participate, we, et cetera, et cetera. Well, it escaped me. I was sent a reminder email. That went in and out of my inbox and I failed to follow through. So I need to publicly apologize to the student and to also to you, Dr. Daniels, for not following through to support the activity on your campus. Uh, to that end, I'd like to think about something we can do. So, um, I promise that if you can put me in touch with the student, that we will figure out a way to follow through. So again, sorry about that, but hopefully I can make up for, for that. I was delighted to attend the, uh, award of the Victoria Foundation at the end of September and congratulations again to all of the folks from Maricopa County community colleges who received recognition, well deserved. I've been chairing the Public Affairs Committee meetings over the last month. I've also attended the Systemwide Strategic Planning Steering Committee meeting and really appreciated the opportunity to be part of that conversation where we talked about environmental scans, the gathering of data, how to use it and apply it to our futures. So, um, I look forward to more information in that regard. Also during the month, I've attended several Association of Governing Boards for University and College Committee meetings. And, uh, I'm on my way to DC on Thursday for a board meeting with the AGB and, uh, some more follow-up committee member, committee meetings. I also did some work with the Arizona Association and Community College Trustees since I sit on that board as well as vice chair. So that's been busy. Um, I missed, and I'm sorry to say, the Student Success Conference, but it wasn't because I didn't want to go. It's because I was in Seattle with my esteemed colleagues. And I was, uh, also impressed with the amount of people that were there. I think there were 2,500 community college trustees and attendants at the conference. And everyone had something to contribute. It's overwhelming when you're sitting in a room with so many colleagues who either are appointed or elected to trusteeship and what they bring to their institutions, large or small, is pretty impressive. And was delighted, as was Donna and others, to be in their presence. I want to congratulate my colleagues, Dr. Narini and Ms. Davis on the outstanding presentation they, uh, did at the conference on our Route to Relief program that supports people struggling to find stability and reskill into workforce. It was, uh, very well done. And there were, it's a very appreciative audience following up with them. So, um, and, and that then summarizes a lot of what I want to say and that is we are a pretty stellar, uh, community college district. Uh, not only what we heard tonight from students to faculty comments, to administrators, to staff, I really have to congratulate you on that civic engagement model. Hallelujah and good for you. Um, you know, we're outstanding. And when we were in Seattle and people would say, well, where are you from? You know, you say Maricopa, how many people are really going to know Maricopa? You know, it's usually Maricopa, otherwise Phoenix. But when we say Maricopa, people knows, people know where we are. They know who we are. They know all about you. They know our great programs. It's, it's almost embarrassing to kind of keep accepting all the accolades because we have such little to do with what they're celebrating about us. But, um, that's really inspiring. I wanted you to know that you have national reputations. We all have to keep upholding those, but, uh, nevertheless important. And again, today I also attended the Arizona Capital Times luncheon to honor Ms. Bitter Smith and, and Lindsay. And congratulations to you. Last, um, Linda Rosenthal mentoring class. You're pretty special people. And I really look forward to being with you on November 22nd. Uh, love the group, love your leader and all the faculty members that support Ms. Hernandez, Dr. Hernandez, sorry. Um, and you know what you're learning and how you're participating is very important to that stellar word I used in the district for the district. So thank you for your participation. And with that, um, trick or treat again, I'm missing out on trick or treating with two little girls. One two and a half and one one and a half. One's a butterfly and the other one's Beetlejuice, Beetlejuice, Beetlejuice. Um, instead I'll be with grownups, uh, at a dinner in DC, but I promise I'll, I'll do my best to wear a costume or something. So I, um, anyway, thank you again. And good, uh, also want to acknowledge they have the dead too. So those are both around the corner. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Uh, it's a lot of repetition, so I'll go through it rapidly. I was pleased again to join several of my colleagues to support Paradise Valley with their HLC visit. Not a tough assignment, quite frankly, lots of great things to say about PV and was pleased to be there. Um, I am, I also, uh, was very honored to be part of the team that recognized Dr. Thor and Dr. Daniel and our other Maricopa honoree um, at the Helios Foundation breakfast. Um, it was a significant percentage of awards. It was a significant percentage of awards that were, had Maricopa tied to them. So we should be proud of, of their accomplishments on our behalf. Uh, let's see, in addition to that, uh, you've heard a little bit about the ACCT conference in Seattle. Maricopa presented two panels, one on Route to Relief that included, uh, Dr. Narini, Ms. Davis and Dr. Gonzalez. And then, um, Ms. Sullivan and I and Dr. Gonzalez, again, he had double duty, helped us with our, um, panel about public involvement, community involvement from the board into community affairs, kind of tying in with what Lauren's team does and Tommy McCone's team does with us to advocate on behalf of the district. We had great attendance and our panel was actually Friday. No one's going to be there, they're all on airplanes, they're at the wharf, they're having something else besides, but the room was full and lots of questions, lots of comments. So again, to Ms. Sullivan's commentary, uh, the work that the collective team at Maricopa does really is getting attention from our colleagues across the country. And my understanding is that's not always been the case. I wasn't here during some of those challenging times, but things are much, are obviously much improved. So, uh, I was very proud to say I'm, I'm from Maricopa. Um, and I will disclose, I have the opportunity over the last month to have lots of conversations with media sources and a variety of topics that impact the district. Uh, we have those facing us going forward. But it is my great pride to represent the, all of the right answers, um, and the right arguments for a number of issues that we are all collectively dealing with. And we look forward to good results in the next few weeks on several of those, I hope. So with that, unless there's anything else from the board, I will, um, thank all of you for your time and attention this evening. And that concludes the meeting. And let us reflect that we are journeying promptly at 8 o'clock. Travel safe.